Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call our Thursday, May 17th, 2018 School Board meeting and public hearing to order. Member Clerk, could you please take a roll call?
We don't need this on.
Member Corcoran is absent. Member Moorhead?
Here.
Member Peterson?
Here.
Member Odegaardis absent. Member Tyson?
Here.
Member Rayfield?
Here.
Member Olson is here.
All right, thank you.
Mrs. Sykes.
All right. Welcome. My name is Rob Rayfield. We're here. Sit a little too loud.
Mine is not like that.
All right. Welcome. My name's Rob Rayfield. We're here to conduct the second public hearing on the proposed closure of the Central Montessori Elementary Program by Independent School District Number 831 Forest Lake Area Schools. I'll be serving as the facilitator for tonight's hearing. Anyone interested in presenting testimony regarding the proposed closing has the opportunity to do so. We've got plenty of time. Both the school district and the members of the public may present evidence that supports their position. The purpose of today's hearing is to provide a description and location of the school that the district has proposed to close, as well as a rationale behind the closure. The hearing also provides members of the public the opportunity to testify about the proposed closing. Finally, today's hearing provides members of the school board the opportunity to consider the testimony and evidence before the regular school board meeting where they will decide whether or not to permanently close the school. Before the public testimony portion of the hearing, the district administration will present the rationale behind the proposed closing. If you would like to speak after the district administration's presentation, see a staff member for a green card. See those here. For a green card, and then give those to Mrs. Ramberg, who will bring the card to me. During the public portion of the hearing, I will call speakers to testify in the order of the cards submitted. Today's hearing involves the Central Montessori Elementary Program. At this time, Superintendent Dr. Massey will present the school district's reasons for proposing to close the Central Montessori Elementary Program.
Thank you, Chair Rayfield, and good evening. My name is Steve Massey, Superintendent for Forest Lake Area Schools, and I would like to thank each of you for attending tonight's public hearing. I'm going to work through the same presentation, much of the same presentation I did at the first public hearing, in an effort to continue to provide consistent information, so please bear with me. But first, I'd like to acknowledge that considering the closing of Central Montessori Elementary School is a very difficult and painful consideration for the school district. The potential closing of CME, or any school for that matter, has a direct impact on families, students, and staff. I would like to stress that this consideration is taken very seriously and with the full understanding of the effect that closing the school will have on students, families, and staff. In an effort to provide a context for this consideration, I would like to present the historical background of the CME school. The school was first formed as a district-wide school in 1992, as a school within a school, and was housed at Scandia Elementary. The next year, the program moved to Columbus Elementary, where it remained until the year 2000. At this time, the school moved to its current location at the Central Learning Center. At its peak, the CME enrollment was 191 students. Today, the enrollment at CME is 115 students. This represents a 40% reduction of enrollment over this time period. The current enrollment breakdown is as follows. In kindergarten, we have 19 students. First grade, 15 students. Grade two, 19 students. Grade three, 19 students. Grade four, 17 students. Grade five, 14 students. And grade six, 12 students. Total enrollment, again, 115 students. The grade configurations are as follows. Kindergarten, one section, two sections of multi-grades 1, 2, and 3, and two sections of multi-grades 4 through 6. The average class size of our grades 1 through 3 sections is 26.5, and the average class size for our grades 4 through 6 is 21.5. The staff at CME consists of five classroom teachers, one counselor shared with the ALC, a .5 music instructor/teacher, a .5 PE instructor, and educators that provide special education services for students. 97 CME students are Forest Lake Area School District residents who live within attendance boundaries of some other Forest Lake Area Elementary School. Out-of-district open enrollment to CME is currently at 18 students. Provided all current district students currently attending CME enroll in their respective neighborhood schools, the enrollment distribution would be as follows. 12 students would enroll at Columbus Elementary, creating a grades 1 through 6 class size average of 25.8. 28 students would attend Forest View Elementary, creating a grades 1 through 6 average class size of 22. 24 students would attend Forest Lake Elementary, creating a class size of 24 on average. Three students would attend Lionel Lakes Elementary, creating a grades 1 through 6 class size average of 24.4. Four students would attend Linwood Elementary, creating an average class size of 28.1. Five students would attend Scandia Elementary, creating a class size average of 22.7. And nine students would attend Wyoming Elementary, creating a grades 1 through 3 average class size of 27. It is our sincere hope that the students who open enroll to CME from other districts would choose to enroll in one of our seven excellent elementary schools. These students would most likely disperse among the seven elementary schools, not resulting in the need to hire additional teaching staff. If all CME students choose to stay in the district, we do not anticipate the need to hire additional staff to keep the class size averages at an acceptable level. It is important to note that district-wide enrollment has declined close to 1,000 pupil units over the last 10 years. Given our financial situation, common need for budget reductions, and overall lower enrollment, we are less able to support a district-wide elementary school of this size. In an ideal world, the district would be in a better position to sustain a district-wide elementary school option for students. However, within the current history of budget reductions and adjustments, and a declining district fund balance, the district is facing the difficult decision of potentially closing CME. This year, the school district is making $2 million of budget cuts and adjustments in order to prepare a balanced budget for the 2018-19 school year. The school board enacted a $1.7 million of reductions and adjustments at the April 5th school board meeting. The remaining $300,000 of reductions still need to be finalized. These reductions, along with the $5.5 million of reductions in the last three years alone, will total $7.5 million of reductions in just the last four years. Given the magnitude of these budget reductions over this time, it is important to understand why the district is in this situation. There are two significant factors. The first is that state per-pupil funding is not keeping pace with inflation. In fact, there is presently a $2,500 per-pupil gap between per-pupil funding and where funding would be had the state kept up with inflation over this time period. The second factor is that our district's voter-approved operating referendum of $462 per pupil has not been increased in over 11 years. The administrative recommendation is to close the CME program, as opposed to making other budget adjustments to reach the necessary $300,000 of reductions. Given the 40% reduction of enrollment since CME's enrollment peak, and the level of budget reductions enacted over the last number of years, continuing to operate CME is not sustainable. Should the school board decide to close CME, currently enrolled students will indeed have the option to enroll in their respective home elementary schools. All these community schools are designated as schools of excellence, have exceptional educators who will welcome them into their school communities. Of course, each of these students will have district transportation to their home elementary school. It is important to note that we do have programming elements at different elementary schools, such as STEM, Spanish Immersion Plus, and International Baccalaureate, that are options if parents can provide transportation. Additionally, equivalent special education services and other support services will be available in these schools should students need or qualify for such services. Should the school board decide to close CME, the staff members who have already been informed that they have a teaching position following the budget reductions enacted on April 5th will still have a teaching position in the district. These teachers have already been informed of their teaching assignments should CME close. Lastly, should the board decide to close CME, classrooms at Southwest Junior High School that are scheduled to be remodeled under the current bond projects will still be remodeled. The use of these instructional spaces will be determined at a future date. The other programs currently housed at the CLC will be relocated to the remodeled Southwest building. I would like to acknowledge the Montessori staff, who have exhibited extreme professionalism throughout this process. Your skills and compassion are greatly appreciated. Likewise, I would like to commend the parents who have expressed their thoughts and concerns in a highly respectful manner. Thank you. And this concludes my remarks.
All right, thank you. At this time, members of the public are invited to speak in favor of or in opposition to the proposed closing of the Central Montessori Elementary Program. As I mentioned at the beginning of the hearing, I will call speakers to testify in the order that they submitted green cards. If you would like to speak and have not already done so, please see a staff member for a green card, and then give the card to Ms. Ramberg, who will bring the card to me. When you are called to speak, please state your name and address. In order to keep things moving, I encourage speakers to limit their presentation to three minutes, but looking at the number of cards we have, I think we'll have plenty of time. In order for the recorder to accurately record testimony, I ask that only one person speak at a time, and the school board is here tonight for this hearing to listen, and we will be able to answer procedural questions. All right? And, yeah, like I say, it looks like we have, our regular meeting is going to start at 8:00, and so we've got this time until then to give testimony as you will. And so generally, we face the board when speaking. And so Thatcher Robertson, would you like to come up and speak?
Hi, my name is Thatcher.
Good job.
Nice. Hi, my name is Thatcher Robertson, and I am in 4th grade at Montessori. I feel that you shouldn't close Montessori because the community of Montessori is great. You have lots of fun. My friends' families, my family, and all the families that go to Montessori love Montessori. I have gone outdoors of different schools, but when I walk into Montessori, I know it's going to be a good day, and those are my reasons that make me think you should not close Montessori. So I hope that you share my opinion, and you don't close Montessori.
Okay. Thank you for having the courage to come up and speak. Kristin Miller.
My name is Kristin Miller. My address is 1244th Street Southeast in Forest Lake. My name is Kristin Miller. I currently have two sons that attend CME. My youngest has been there since kindergarten, and currently will be entering 5th grade in the fall. When I returned to Forest Lake five years ago, I was extremely happy to learn about CME, as I loved the more one-on-one attention they received, the stability and reassurance that the same people will be here year after year is what they needed to grow. My three children have all attended CME. The closeness of the community and the stability of having the same teacher and classmates for multiple years is exactly what my children needed. As prior to coming to CME, my two older children bounced in 10 different school districts, from North Branch to Minneapolis to Mankato and Fargo. At CME, my children are not just a number or a name on a piece of paper. They all have flourished here at CME. Due to the consistency of the faces here, the staff from CME have gone from teachers to beloved friends and a huge support system for me and my children, as things with our past still affect all of us to this day. I feel without CME, my children would not be as outgoing as they are and has shaped them. I feel CME is beneficial to children and families in Forest Lake because it helps children who wouldn't do well in bigger school settings thrive. CME staff has become like family to me, and my children and I are hoping there is a different solution so that CME can remain open for the children and families like mine, who can benefit from the caring staff, the patience of all staff, the closeness of our school community. CME will always be my home school. Thank you.
Yes, no?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I see I mispronounced that.
That's fine. David Rachi, 20297 Everton Circle. For those members that weren't there at the last meeting, I do not, just as a little background, I have four kids. They've all had the distinct advantage of going through CME. One graduates this year. I still have one in CME. For you members that were there, I don't have a PowerPoint, so you'll be happy about that. So I want to reiterate my surprise that we're still having a serious conversation about closing CME. There are other alternatives, but they're alternatives of what gets taught, not how things get taught. We have a multi-grade elementary school that follows the Montessori principles of teaching, which is really different on how kids learn, and some kids thrive in that. You have 115 clearly right now that are. And it's surprising to me that we're doing this for $300,000 out of a $70 million budget. It's one-half of 1%. And it seems to me that closing a school of excellence, an elementary school, our primary purpose of being here as a school board seems a little bit surprising again. If you close it, it gives you no alternatives on how kids learn in their elementary years. They will get pushed into the charter schools, and we've seen that quite a bit over the years. As Dr. Massey said, one of the big reasons people leave our district is they're going to the charter schools and the private schools. I also find it surprising when you have 56 families, and I want to be clear, mine isn't one of them, but 56 families who've said their kids are not going to go to a school in this district next year if you close CME. That's over $350,000 of state funding you're going to lose right there. So I don't quite understand how this is an economic choice that we're contemplating. It seems to me that you might be digging a bigger hole than actually helping in this situation. So over the last 12 years, I mentioned this a little bit, I volunteered to coach almost every single one of those years, I think it was every year, in multiple sports. And being at CME, when you're a coach, you get put in with other schools. So I've coached for schools in the entire district, including the private and charter schools. I've gotten to know the families. I've been very supportive every time you guys have wanted a bond to be passed, a levy to be passed. And I will tell you, there are two reasons that when people say they're not going to vote. It is not as big on this one, but it is growing over the years. They'll say, "My kids are in the charter school. Why should I pass and raise my taxes when it doesn't benefit my kids?" And the second reason is, they don't trust the school board. So that's one of my, you know, the real problem that we have isn't a spending problem. You guys know that. You all know that. You guys have done amazing amount, and I've said this all along, I'm very happy with my kids' education. And I know you do it on a much less, on a smaller budget than other school districts. We have a funding problem. We've got to get this levy passed this fall, and I will do everything I can to help you guys do that. But I will tell you, having worked through this, there has to be trust. And simply put, people don't give money to people they don't trust. We all, that's just an axiom that we can all live by. I think that's true. And I think if you decide to close CME tonight, you're going to exasperate the obstacles you've had in passing levies in the past. What ends up happening is, if you close the only alternative to the elementaries, and you see, I think what will end up happening is you're going to see more and more kids go to the charter schools. We know that North Lakes Academy is going to start a K through 4 program, not this next school year, but the following school year. So there's going to be even more competition for those elementary schools. Closing an elementary school, especially one where it's very different, these kids are all in multi-grade. My kids didn't know anything different until they got to the junior high system, which they're much older than, they can adjust faster. But doing that four days before the end of the school year doesn't instill trust in this board's planning capabilities. Closing CME with the lack of clarity that we've seen in this board and this process is not going to instill trust in the community. And I think more importantly, to close it to save $300,000, when you're looking at losing $350,000 worth of state funds, doesn't instill trust in the voters that financially wise decisions are being made. Again, we know that the school board, the problem with the school district, is not a spending problem. It's a funding problem. And if you decide to keep CME open tonight, you're going to install trust in the voters that they can trust you, that their money is going to be spent wisely if they pass 11. So thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Angie Opal?
Hi, I'm Angie Opal, 21340 Heath Avenue Court, North Forest Lake. Just a little bit about my background. I've spent my entire career in higher education, so that's really what I know. Reflecting the last couple of days, I was looking at what I know about higher ed and kind of correlating that to the situation with Central Montessori. And what I discovered is that a lot holds true, even at the elementary level as it does in higher education, and that is that there's not a one-size-fits-all. In higher ed, there's a lot of options for students, from big, large, traditional universities to community colleges, to very small, private colleges, and students have those choices. Each of those choices has something different to offer to students. There are students who are unsuccessful at a traditional university that find great success at a community college or at a smaller college. To correlate that with the elementary level, there are students who have struggled at other elementary schools, maybe at their home elementary school in the district, but they've thrived at CME. It doesn't mean that there's anything wrong with any of those schools, but that they just weren't a good fit for some of the kids at CME. It's just the environment, the teaching style, and the love and acceptance that's poured into our kids at Central Montessori has really made a huge difference in their lives and in their ability to learn. I just want to speak a little bit to the impact on the kids. My son is in 4th grade. He's 10 years old at Central Montessori, and unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight. He's going to be here as soon as he's done with his prior commitment, but he was in the front row at the last meeting with Thatcher. You know, and when kids are dealing with change and dealing with what's going on in their lives, it's stressful for them, and talking to other parents, and, you know, Thatcher, I really commend you for being able to get up here and talk. Kids do what they know how to do. So I just want to share with you what happened with my son this week. He came to me earlier this week, and he asked if he could submit a prayer request. And you may not know what that is, but there's a radio station out of the University of Northwestern in St. Paul called KTIS. It's a Christian radio station, and they have a program where they, listeners can submit prayer requests. So on his own, he wrote up an email, and he submitted a prayer request to the radio station so that other listeners could read it and pray for his school to not close. He's dealing with things the way he knows how, and, you know, all of our kids are dealing with things the way they know how. So please, just take that into consideration. It's really impactful on our kids and on our families. Thank you for the time to speak, and thanks for listening.
All right, thank you. John Bodine?
John Bodine, 26150 Goodview Avenue, Wyoming, Minnesota. I have a daughter right now who's in 2nd grade at the Central Montessori, and my oldest son went through 4th, 5th, and 6th grade at Central Montessori, on recommendation of a good friend of ours, Michelle Ullman. I'm not a real casual person. I kind of get to the point, and I can be brash in a way, and I can rub people the wrong way. So if my last comments did that, I apologize, but that's who I am. Getting back to the trust issue, I've been in this district for 40 years. I graduated in '88. My dad graduated in '57, and everyone in between us has gone through Forest Lake. It's been there. It's unfortunate that it's there, but it's there. And as soon as this recent levy was announced instantly on social media, the Good Old Boy Club started their campaign against it. It's unfortunate, but it's the reality that it is, and we have to figure out a way to get around that. Closing this school, it doesn't make sense to me. There's $300,000, and you're going to lose $300,000. It's a net negative move. I don't care how you write it out, it's net negative. You're going to come out negative next year. It's not going to be a $300,000 savings, it's going to be a loss again. So how you're going to relay that to a constituency that questions you already, that you're going to make a financial move that's in that negative, I don't see how that's going to fly very Charter schools, I've got three kids in Lila. I'm on the Lila board. I personally chose that because of my experiences with Forest Lake, and not only, mainly it's with the constituency of Forest Lake and their lack of support for the schooling system. I don't trust that they'll do the right thing. So I want my kids where I think that they can be taken care of, and unfortunately, it's starting to go that way again. And now with the Montessori closing, it just drives it deeper into me that, why did I take that chance? There's just a lot of, there's a lot of uniqueness with the school. It was the first Montessori in the state to be named a school of excellence. I mean, that should be crowed about, and I don't hear much about it. You know, the initial year, I think it was Mason's 2nd year, they got T-shirts, they made a big event about it. It was really cool, and you could see that there's momentum, and then that went away. And now we're seeing declining in enrollment, and I don't know why. I mean, are we promoting the school? It's an option that apparently in the cities, there's waiting lists for. So what are we doing that's different, that's not causing our school to grow but actually shrink? So I think we need to look at other options that are not permanent, because this school, you close it, you're not opening it again. There's no way that a school's going to open again with the school district, and you're opening the door for another charter school. Now unfortunately, 13 years ago, the school board was presented with an opportunity to bring on an immersion school. And at that time, they thought it was a great idea, but just couldn't see how it would work. That's been a multimillion-dollar mistake in funding yearly. You lose millions of dollars to Lila, and the first opportunity was to bring it here. Why would you open that? Why would you open that Pandora's box again? Why would you open that gate for another opportunity for a charter school, a school that works, to come in here and dig in and take more away? So I guess I would just consider that. You're leaving an opportunity there that's, it's ripe, and people, parents are committed to do whatever it takes to get their kids educated in the way that they see fit. And I hope we keep this Montessori.
Hi there. I'm Angela Parsons from Wyoming, Minnesota. I talked at the last board meeting about my son, who went through Central Montessori, graduated last year. He's now very successful, U.S. Marine. I wanted to talk tonight about my niece. She is eight years old now, she's in third grade. She came to live with me when she was four years old, and she's had a tough little life. So there was no question in my mind that she would go to Central Montessori when she came to live with me. And I'll preface this by saying she has, she does not have an IEP, okay? There's not a special documentation for her. And I just want to stress that the effort that the staff at CME goes to, to accommodate her and help her be successful, is really just amazing. It's unconventional, it's non-traditional. They use their imagination, they use people that other schools may not really consider using in this type of environment. So the flexibility that they're afforded by the size of their school and by the structure of their school is very unique, and I think you keep hearing that over and over again. I would really like to come back, excuse me, in 10 years and show you her picture and tell you what a success she is. So I really hope I can do that. I hope that she can finish her elementary career at Central On a practical note, I think you've also heard about the turmoil that this has caused. And I think the vast majority of people in this room understand that the timing of this and the delays are not your fault. I would hope that you would take into account, though, that the turmoil that this timing does have on these families and the teachers as well. It's a difficult place to be right now in the school for these kids, and it breaks my heart that they're going through this. It's a distraction from their learning and from their education. So I would hope that just, given the timing, given the way that this played out, that that would persuade you to vote no to close this school. Lastly, I try to come up with solutions. That's what I do in my work, that's what's expected of me. If you come with a complaint, you should come with a proposed solution. You know, the bond is an issue I'm not ready to tackle. There's people here that are, you know, I think that's great. I would propose, and I would volunteer, to help Central Montessori, should you decide to keep it open, in building their population. I think that is one of the things that would help the board. I think that's one of the things that would help the board get through some of these financial things. We clearly see Central Montessori as a pure diamond. I think a lot of the district, a lot of the surrounding areas, if they even see, if they're even aware of Central Montessori, it's a diamond in the rough. And we can bring, we can bring it a lot of value to the district with this school. You've heard people testify that they moved to this district for the Montessori school. We should be promoting this school, and there's a lot that we can do to do that. And I'm willing to help. As a parent, as a pseudo-parent to my niece, there's a lot we can do. And I think if we have the board's support in this school, if we have the district's support, we can overcome this, and we can make Central Montessori something that the district is extremely proud of, and we can hold it up as a model for other districts. So I leave that on the table as a proposal for you. I thank you all for your time. I know this is a very difficult position you're in. I thank you for listening to everybody.
Hi, I'm Amy Thai. I'm from Forest Lake. I sent an email out last night really late to everyone on the board. I hope you all had an opportunity to read it. I just wanted to come and just get up in front of all of you so you can put a face with a name. I've lived in Forest Lake all my life. I'm a graduate of Forest Lake High School. I'm an educator. I taught in the district for three years, and I have children in the district, and I have children outside of the district as well. We had a difficult time with our youngest son in his neighborhood school. And the year that he was in that neighborhood school, we were all working together as a team to try and do what was best for him. When we got to the end of that school year, we, as parents, made a decision to try and seek out something else for him, to give him a different opportunity. It just was not a good fit for him. He is not on an IEP. We were leaning into that direction. We were struggling with that as parents. So we looked for what else was out there, what other opportunities we had. I, even as an educator growing up in the community, I was not aware of CME. I did not know what CME was. I had background in Montessori when I went to college, but I just really did not quite understand how that building worked and how they operated. And I knew that it was different from some of the other buildings in the district. So when we went and we made an appointment with Mrs. LaFine, and I took my son with me, and we toured the school, I recognized a few faces from, you know, other district things that I'd attended, and it felt comfortable for me to ask the questions I needed to ask and find out more about the school. And we were blown away by the opportunity that we had right here in Forest Lake, that we did not even know, I did not even know, even working in the district, what we had. And when we enrolled him and he began school, he is a totally, totally different child, totally different student. The opportunities that have been presented to him are just opportunities I didn't see were going to be able to happen in that neighborhood school. The staff is incredible, the multi-age, the small class sizes. We know by doing these reductions, our class sizes are getting larger and larger, and it's more and more difficult for students like my son that have a hard time focusing to be able to really focus and do what they need to do. But it also provided opportunity for him to be able to look forward to that multi-age classroom, to be able to look down on those younger students and help them out, just like they helped him out. And it forms a community, and it forms a home for us as a family. It breaks my heart that we're considering closing a school, any school in the district, being in the district, going through it and working in it and living in it. It's difficult to hear some of the negative things, it's difficult to be a part of some of those reductions, and to just feel kind of downtrodden by the fact that we cannot pass levies to be able to accommodate what we need. But I just feel like, looking at the opportunity to close a school versus whatever other options we could come up with together, I feel like it just would be really a negative impact on our community if we were to close CME. Not only for my child, but for the children, other children in the school, but also all those upcoming children that are coming in. So, thank you for listening. I hope you reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a comment. I read your email, and we've gotten quite a few emails, and very well-written, very respectful, so I wanted to say thank you. And I know I speak for the board when we read all those and appreciate them. Right, Kim Robertson.
Hi, I feel like I'm barely taller than Thatcher, standing at this microphone now. So I did send an email earlier this week, just for the crowd. I'm Kim Robertson. I'm the secretary of the PTSA at Montessori. I have three boys in the district, one for just another few days until he graduates, and then a seventh grader at Century, and Thatcher is a fourth grader at Montessori. I just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the things that have been happening in the last couple of weeks, because I've communicated with you guys several times. A couple of positive things that have been happening, we hosted a Lego Family Fun Night in conjunction with our PTSA meeting last week, and it was an amazing turnout. So when we host these Family Fun Nights, we try to do them at least five times a year. We have five classrooms, and the classrooms host the nights, and we had more than 80 people show up and play with Legos and engage with each other, and we had more than double our attendance in our PTSA meeting. It was pretty remarkable. It's in our main meeting that we elect our officers for the next year. We filled all four seats. And that is not something that happens easily. I know, you know, many of you, obviously you guys are very involved in the community, you know, volunteer circles are sometimes hard to fill. People are nervous about committing their time, and it was amazing the way people stepped up. Even with all this going on, they said, "I want to be part of this community, I want to be part of the solution, I want to move this forward in the right way." And so that was a really amazing thing that happened last week. The other thing, so Friday I attended the Pops concert, and I emailed you about this. I saw several former CME students, really amazing young men and women who are growing up and moving on, some returning from college to see former classmates playing. It was a great night. What was shocking to me was that people did not understand what's happening right now. So many people, when they hear CME might close, think, "Oh yeah, well, it's just moving. They're closing CME because they're opening it at Southwest next year." Just before we came, Thatcher had guitar lessons, and his guitar teacher said the same thing. He said, "What do you mean there's a vote tonight? They voted a couple of years ago. They're moving the school." People don't understand what's going on. And I just, I think it's important that you hear that, that you understand that as much outreach, as much as this is our lives day-to-day right now, so many people that would rally around us don't even understand what's happening. And I think it's important that you, that you know that. Thank you.
My name is Sophie Montgomery. I know I'm just a kid, but I really don't want CME to close because my sister goes to this, to Central Montessori, and every day she comes home and she tells me how good her day was, and she says what, if she started a project or if she finished a project, and how happy she is to be with her teachers. And she loves that school. And I know that it's a great school because I went there a couple of years ago, and I had really nice teachers, and it's an awesome school to be in. And it's, when my sister came home and she said, "Maybe CME is going to close," and she had a horrible face on, she had a horrible face, and it was really sad. And then when she went to a CME meeting, the first one, she got home and she, her, she had tears in her eyes, and she was crying because she told me that CME might close. And a lot of people are saying, "It's going to close because, well, it's going to because, oh my gosh, it's..." Yeah, because people said that it's going to vote, and a lot of people are going to say, "Let's close it because it's, they even considered that to close the school board." And I will be really sad today if CME closes because my sister loves that school so much. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Any other speakers? All right, if we don't have any further speakers, I think I'll call a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so we're going to adjourn, then we're going to open up our regular meeting at 8 o'clock. I'd like to call our Thursday, May 17, 2018 Forest Lake Area Schools School Board Meeting to Order. Member Clerk, could you please take a roll call?
Member Morehead?
Here.
Member Peterson?
Here.
Member Odegaard?
Here.
Member Tyson?
Here.
Member Rayfield?
Here.
Member Olson is here, and Member Corcoran is absent.
All right, thank you. All right, are there any items that people would like pulled from the consent agenda? If not, do we have a motion to approve 3-1 through 3-3?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, consent agenda approved. All right, four, old business, 4-1, discuss and/or approve reductions for 2018, 2019. We have a proposed resolution in our folder here for closing the Central Montessori School.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the proposed resolution of closing Central Montessori Elementary School.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
I immediately want to speak to these wonderful people and try to give you a little reason about what my thinking has been, and it certainly hasn't been not listening. I love the kids that have written. My heart goes out to them. And you'd think after all the years on this board, and all the cuts that I've had to make, that I've hurt either the staff, or the kids, or the parents, that it would get pretty easy for me, but it's not. But in this case, I look at our entire district, and I'm proud of what we do with what we do. And my decision came down to, smaller class sizes is wonderful for Montessori, and it's helped so many of your kids, and they need that. But by not proposing to close the Montessori, I would be increasing all of the other classes. And I just in my heart couldn't find that, to do that. I just thought fairness to me is across the board. And after hearings from some of your young people, and I told them that tonight, the type of parents you are and the kind of kids that you are, you're going to be fine. It's going to be hard, it's never easy, but you're going to be fine because you're strong, and your parents are strong. And that's what I hope for you, even though I had to make this decision for myself. Some of you will even go to other places, and I wish you very, very, very much good luck. Others will stay here, and if you ever need anything from this board member to make your time easier, I would be happy to have that. And on that, I'll just stop.
Thank you. Any else like to speak?
I'll go next. I won't be supporting the motion that's on the table. You know, taking a school away from kids, you know, isn't something that I'm prepared to support, and I think there's other avenues that we could go with the budget reductions that we have to make, so I won't be supporting the motion.
Thank you.
I'll go next. I kind of have written this out because it's really hard for me to talk when I'm emotional. So for me, as a board member of six years, sitting up here facing this decision has weighed very heavily on my mind and in my heart. The reality of cutting 7.5 million in four years, and the community's decision not to pass our operating levy last fall, has left us in this predicament. The reductions have been astounding. Every year, the cuts continue to come, and just when I think they won't get any worse, they do. I have worked hard as a board member to avoid getting to this point. Door knocking by myself in neighborhoods, attending parades, community events, wherever I can be where the parents are and the community members to answer questions, inform, be helpful. I have been there. But the reality still exists. We have not increased our levy for 11 years. My youngest daughter, a now 21-year-old senior in college, was in fourth grade at Scandia Elementary. Scandia Elementary, and that seems like ages ago. Every year of cuts, there are tears shed by excellent educators that are let go, staff that are let go. I get calls and concerns about budgets that are slashed and no longer exist, such as our family services budget that helps our neediest families. And more concerning is the sad message it sends to our students overall in our entire district. I think to myself, this cannot go on, but yet it does, year after year. Which leads me to my decision tonight. I have been the liaison at the Central Montessori and worked in that building in the early childhood special ed for six years, so this is not easy. I tell the story about the parent meeting where I had chicken noodle soup and sat down with some of the best parents that I've known for many years. But some of my concerns are not new. When I campaigned in 2016, I had questions asked to me about CME on both sides. I know that sustaining a ninth elementary is very difficult for us, and the trickle-down of losing students overall in our district has affected us as well. In looking at the low enrollment, which is consistent for the last ten years, I just wish there was a waiting list, and I wish I wasn't looking at those numbers. Also, a good friend of mine, who's not here tonight and has been a parent at CME, has also shared this, but we are losing 25% of our fourth through sixth graders to charter schools. And that makes me really sad that I won't see them graduate from one of the finest schools in the North Metro, to which I'm very proud of. So my decision, as tough as it is, I have to really consider all of our students, all of our buildings, district-wide, and to echo Member Morehead, it is about fairness and it is about the numbers. And I do want to say to you, parents, I sincerely hope you will find your niche in one of our other eight elementaries. They all have wonderful administrators and programs as well. So I will be voting to close the Central Montessori tonight.
I just want everybody to know that not a single school board member, right from the get-go, said, "Yep, I'm on board with that." We heard this, we heard you, we read every single email and letter and video that you sent us. Our decisions have wavered across the board every day. Should we, shouldn't we, shouldn't we, should we? My decisions have gone every which way. We should not be in this position. It's not fair to anybody. I hope to still be active in Forest Lake when we actually do come together as a community to support our schools. I don't know if I will be. I don't know if I'll hang in that long. My decision will be based on what is the best decision for our 6,000-plus kids.
Thank you. I think, for me, I, you know, my kids went through the school district, and it was an amazing experience for them. I thank every day for the education they got, and I know how important to them their elementary school was. It was a part of their life, it was a part of our life. A lot of the friends my wife and I as adults have today are because of the people we met, you know, at, we went to Scandia Elementary. And so, you know, I, this decision is very difficult for me personally, and as have these cuts over time. One of the things about a lot of the cuts we've made is they're small in all kinds of different places. And those kind of cuts have a devastating effect, as well as some of these more consolidated ones. I, so I've gone back and forth, you know, I've gone back and forth over time with this decision, and, I mean, one of the first schools I visited when I decided to run the school board was CME, and it's had an important place in our heart as a board for a long time. And, you know, a vote tonight would end something that we love. But for me, the deciding factor is, is that if I decide to keep CME, then it means I have to make cuts elsewhere. And one thing I've been, as a board member, I've had the fortune of coming to understand is, as a parent, I understood Scandia Elementary. But as a school board member, I've been to all the schools. I've looked at all the schools, and I've seen all the amazing programs they have. And Lino with its STEM and our Spanish immersion with literacy, and the Forest Project up in Linwood, and International Baccalaureate at Scandia, and I've seen these amazing programs that they all have. And if I decide that, that your argument is compelling about lower class sizes, which I agree with, it means that I'm gonna be raising class sizes in these other elementaries. And if there's two elementary teachers in third grade at Scandia and I end up cutting one of them, you could see class sizes going up into the thirties when they're averaging in the low twenties right now. Our elementary schools generally have pretty good class sizes. And if we're cutting teachers in those areas, then those class sizes are going up. And so that a lot of the economic things that people are talking about, about losing students, having them go to other schools, yes, they're absolutely true. It scares the heck out of me, right? Because I truly believe that students in this community, students are gonna get the best education overall at Forest Lake Area Schools. They're gonna have better college readiness, they're gonna have more options at the high school. We've got great elementaries that support kids that are, need extra help. I think, you know, they're gonna get a great education in our schools. And I believe that from the bottom of my heart. But if we start raising those elementary class sizes into the thirties, people are gonna be leaving, right? And I don't blame them. And that's what I am, as a board member, facing, is that do the students at CME go into these other top-performing elementary schools, right? I actually think they're gonna get a great education at those schools. That's for every parent to decide. But for me, that's, of all the going back and forth, that's what I keep coming back to, is that, is that where the cuts happen. And if we have seven, you know, elementary schools that are rising class sizes, that's just, it's not, you know, you, that's the argument you guys were making over and over, is that it was about class sizes. And when we're cutting teachers, that's what suffers. And so that's what made the decision. For me, even though personally it's a very difficult, difficult one to make, and I want people to know that if the motion prevails, that we will do everything we can to help kids make a good transition into other schools. We will do everything we can to make sure parents are heard about their kids' needs as they're going into these other schools. And I don't expect anybody in this room to take that as much consolation because I know how important my elementary was to me. But that's where I'm coming from this issue. And I also want to thank everybody for the emails, and especially I want to thank the kids for coming out and speaking on their behalf and saying how much they love their school. I very much appreciate it. Further discussion?
Yeah, so generally, when I come to these decisions, I've thought about it for weeks and weeks, and I've got something really great to say. And I don't tonight. I don't have anything really great to say. There's nothing good to say. I've labored over this decision. It's one of the hardest ones I've had to face on the school board. I will vote to close CME regretfully for many of the reasons the other board members laid out. And it's personal. My daughter struggled in the fourth grade and went to CME and was successful there. And so I understand the impact that sometimes something different has and how that can So.
So let's get it over with.
It's not what I signed on for, but it's where we are, and I'm not happy about it.
Further discussion? If there's no further discussion, Member Clerk, please take a roll call.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Odegaard?
No.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Corcoran is absent. And Member Morehead?
Aye.
Right? Motion prevails? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.